For the public hearing portion of tonight's evening, there is Keith, Mayor Keith Hedrick present and Clerk Megan Peters present.
Okay. So this is for the public hearing. So there's a notice in the newspaper with the budget and also the notice of the City of Groton, notice of the public hearing pursuant to Article Six, Section Two B of the City Council Charter, City of Groton Charter. City of Groton Mayor and Council will hold a public hearing on Monday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, at six thirty P. M. The council chambers of the City of Groton Municipal Building, two ninety-five Marinius Street, Groton, Connecticut, for the electors of the City of Groton and all others qualified to vote to solicit input from them concerning the proposed FY twenty twenty-three City of Groton budget dated at Groton, City, Groton, Connecticut, this twelfth day of April twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Okay? And the message that I gave to council, dear members of the city councils required by Article Six, Section Two A of a charter, I submit to you the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, FY twenty twenty-three. I'm submitting a budget which includes an increase of nine hundred and four thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars in comparison to FY twenty twenty-two. The proposed budget includes half the funding for Shore Avenue Seawall Construction Project as well as additional contractual services for assistance with the inspections that may be required due to large construction projects. As in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget, these additional contractual services will be funded through the use of the fund balance based on the unexpended contractual services that were budgeted for in FY twenty twenty, FY twenty twenty-one and FY twenty twenty-two. The budget also follows FY twenty twenty-two budget with funding for capital projects and continuous efforts to reserve funds for future purchases of vehicles. The use of the undesigned fund balance will be two point two million five hundred thousand dollars. This will leave a healthy reserve of twenty-six point one five percent, slightly more than FY twenty twenty-two. Proposed budget would produce a point six three or fifteen percent decrease in the mill rate to three point six seven. The mill rate will be updated once we receive a twenty twenty-one grant list after the Board of Assessment Appeals actions. The city continues to be fiscally responsible. So this is the portion of the meeting where we ask for public comment. This is to solicit public comment from the electors of the City of Groton and all others qualified to vote concerning the proposed City of Groton FY twenty twenty-three budget. So if you want to speak, we have a sign-up sheet. Please sign up. When your name is called, please come. Come to the microphone, speak. You have five minutes. Talk about the budget. That's the purpose of this meeting, so please keep your comments to the budget. And with that, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, Deb Patrick, Eight Mellow Ave, Groton.
Okay. So please state your name and your address for the record.
Deborah Patrick, Eight Mellow Avenue here in Groton. I'm here tonight because in going through the budget, I did see a couple of things that I had questions about. The first one is that the clerk and administrative clerk's salary has been restructured, and I was just curious about that, having done the job for so long. And because it was done differently, I'm just curious about the reason for the restructuring. And the second thing that I would like to speak about is the Economic Development Specialist's salary is slated to get a forty-six percent increase. Now, while I would certainly say that the person works hard, I don't think anyone should get a forty-six percent increase in their salary. And if it's a thing of, well, in the town they get, well, that's not apples to apples because the city is three point three square miles. The town is over thirty square miles. It's not apples to apples. And I can't imagine why anyone thinks a forty-six percent increase is called for. Last year, when a five percent increase was given to one individual, I thought that was a lot. I understood that that person did a lot of work, and therefore, that's why that was given. But forty-six percent is just outrageous. And I hope that all of you on the council will look at that and discuss it in depth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else signed up?
I have no one else signed up.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public, close public comment, and we will adjourn the public hearing. So we're adjourned at, what do we have, six thirty-seven, or whatever you have? Okay, we'll call counsel up. And Finance Director, you are correct. Okay, we'll call the City of Groton Special Committee of the whole to order for Monday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Present, I have Mayor Keith Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Guinevere Depot, Counselor Lisa McCabe, Counselor Paul Norris via Zoom, Counselor Christine Piazza, Counselor Stephen Sheffield, Finance Director Ron Yuhas, and City Clerk Megan Peters.
Okay, so the referrals that we have is city budget presentations tonight. We'll be talking about finance. We start on page twenty-nine. All right, Ron, I'll turn it over to you.
With the finance budget for the proposed fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three is a two point eight-two percent increase over the previous fiscal year of twenty-one, twenty-two. The main driver of this increase is the salary and benefits portion. If we look at this, the salaries, the director is up to three percent, the standard across what was the directive. The admin assistant is a five point three-three percent increase, which is due to step increases in the union contract along with the annual increase. The utility accountant and the senior accountant are both just the annual increase of the two point two-five percent. And then the accounting assistant is also going through the step process within the bargaining agreement. So that's a five point four-two percent increase for a total wage increase of three point three-seven. Like I said, the biggest piece of that is two of those individuals are still going through the step process, and that's why it's greater than the two point two-five percent annual increase. The, under the operating expenses, pretty much a flat with the exception of an increase of two thousand dollars in the contractual services from seventy-five thousand to seventy-seven thousand. The contractual services are made up of legal, the audit, the town of Groton tax collections, and any special projects that we may have that would need a consultant. So other than that, relatively flat with the exception of the personnel and the benefits that we've discussed at the last meeting.
Okay. Questions from the council. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Can you explain what a step increase is?
So within the union contracts, there are usually about five different steps. I think in this one, there's either five or six steps that they go. So they start off at a step one. After they're here for a year, they step up to the next step, which then gives, it's all negotiated within the contract. So it gives them not only their annual increase, but a progressive increase over their first five to six years.
Are they based on merit, or is it usually just based on how many years they've been employed?
Usually just years of service, and then there is performance reviews that are done in it. But it is just, for most instances, it's either a six-month or a one-month based on years of service.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Norris?
Can you please explain, again, the difference between current budget and an estimated budget? It's been seen in leadership or even personal services quite a bit, and I'm wondering what the cause of that is. Was there personnel vacancy or something along that?
Yes, there's a vacancy that's been vacant. The senior accountant slash purchasing, purchasing agent's position has been vacant, which is creating that decrease. And if you look under, on page, on thirty-three, the FTEs, you'll see that there is zero for the actual twenty-one for that position, and then we're hoping to fill it prior to year end, when there's estimated about sixty-five hundred there.
In your financing plan, what is interdepartmental?
That is, it's a fifty-fifty, which is funded through the utilities for the services that we perform for the electric, water, and sewer.
Got it. And I think the last question I have is with purchasing, I do not know the history of this beyond fiscal year twenty-one. But does it need, that line need to be budgeted at fifty-six-five versus something like fifty?
That's really just a salary allocation that's going across the board. It's a set percentage. It would, if you were to decrease that to the fifty, it would just get reallocated to a different bucket, per se, because the wages are the wages.
Okay. Well, what is in that purchasing, that zero-zero-four?
It's made up of the salary, mainly the purchasing agent salary, but it goes across the entire department because everybody kind of touches it to a certain extent. So it's based on a percent allocation. And then there are other, other things that could be the office supplies that are allocated towards purchasing and so on.
Oh, so that really isn't about purchasing goods and services. It's actually personnel?
It's, it's main, right, it's mainly personnel, and it's just the way the cost center is laid out, that, the way the total budget's allocated for those, for those cost centers.
And then, unfortunately, there's more reading, more questions. Is on page thirty-two, where we have a bunch of personnel services, sell back of time off, I believe it is. It has in fiscal year twenty-two, nothing for estimate in twenty-two, and then reallocated a request of six thousand again in twenty-three. But I also see nothing was done with that fiscal year twenty-one. So again, come back to, is that a dollar figure that is really needed?
It, it's not, we could cut it out. The reason I leave that in there is to keep it consistent, and that is usually, if you have a retiree, there's potential for buyback of sick and vacation time. So I just leave that in there as a placeholder. We had it a few years back when we had two retirees.
So help me understand, so when someone retires, their buyback time comes out of finance, not out of the individual department budgets?
This would be just for the finance department.
Oh, just for?
Yep.
So then, would we, do we anticipate any retirements within the finance department within the next three, so years?
I'm not sure how to answer that. There's, I don't anticipate anybody, but there's, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the finance budget? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Ron. The next one is the sanitation and building maintenance. Bill, starts on page seventy-three and then seventy-eight as well. Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to present the sanitation budget for, operating budget for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-three. Sanitation division supports the collection, transportation, and disposal of the city's municipal solid waste, five days a week, recycling, which is four days a week, and bulky waste, and those are as requested and scheduled. Fleet vehicles and fleet maintenance are also included in this budget. We will be continuing with a level service agreement across the budget, so same services. Increases for this budget year will be in contractual labor and benefits, a small increase to support the cost of our trash containers, which were affectionately called the auto containers, and one hundred thousand dollars for the vehicle replacement fund. Okay? As far as staffing goes, the staff is whole. We recently had one employee transfer over to Parks and Recs, replaced him with a new employee. His name is Daquan Alger. And the second person that we hired was Benjamin Flight, and he replaced Brian Niemann. Okay? All right. And let's see, so we'll go over to the budget. So I'll speak to page seventy-six, and if you like, I'll go down through every line item. It shouldn't take too, too long. Full-time employees, we went from three eighty-eight-ten to three ninety-two, five forty-four. That's about an eleven thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollar increase, and that's for salary. So myself, staff employees, again, three percent. The technicians, so the, the union members over in Public Works, their team is two point five percent, and my admin is two point two five percent. Okay? Overtime, we considered that a wash, so we stayed both at twenty-six fifty down through. Part-time employees, that's for my summer help for the staff, and that's thirty-eight, four hundred. That remained unchanged. Also longevity is also unchanged at twenty-five hundred. Medical insurance went up, as expected with the benefits. Life insurance as well. Pension as well went up a little bit. Those are all on average, three percent. FICA tax as well. OPEB, so past employee benefits, that's the same, so thirteen thousand five fifty each. Workers' compensation remained unchanged, and that's at seventy thousand. Okay? We get down to operating expenses. So just a small increase in office supplies, advertising, and that's basically just to post the summer help employees, a hundred dollars. We had never had that funded, so I put a line item for that. Okay? Contractual services remained unchanged, that's nine thousand. Tipping fees, and that includes the bulky waste for disposal of sanitation and recycling, remain unchanged, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. General materials and supplies went from ten to twelve. Any, that small increase is two thousand dollars, only because the cost of the toders went up. So I increased the two thousand so that we can purchase same, the same volume of toders. And the toders, we really have been selling, the volume has been going through, so I really needed to maintain the same amount of trash buckets. Okay? Vehicle operations and supplies remained unchanged at thirty thousand dollars. Diesel fuel dropped from thirty-five, five hundred down to thirty thousand. And the vehicle fund, replacement fund, you can see there, last year, we were awarded two hundred fifty thousand dollars. This year, I'm asking for a hundred thousand dollars. Okay? And with that, open for questions, should you have any? Question on sanitation. Counselor Sheffield?
Bill, thank you.
You're welcome.
The diesel fuel, you said you dropped it down another five thousand. What about with the energy costs that have been incurred lately? You think that may change a little bit if prices go up? You might need to increase that number?
Increase that? So, you know, Ron, I don't know if you want to speak to that, too, or not?
Yeah, the, the reason why we dropped it was just from historically, it has been coming in significantly under budget. So we feel that by dropping it down to the thirty, we're still at a safe level, even if we do see a price increase that is unexpected.
Also, how do we buy our fuel? We're locked in, right?
Yeah, we-
So we're locked into a contract on fuel, fuel price.
And how long does that stay, for that lock-in?
It's only, it's for a year, but it, there are clauses in there, too, that may, so.
Thank you, Ron. Counselor McCabe?
Hi, thank you. I'm just curious, what is this line item, longevity?
Longevity bonus. So the union, per their contract, they're awarded a, a certain percentage of their pay every year, and that's just successful. Every year, they get a longevity bonus award. You're welcome. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several questions. So one question, and I think this is going to carry over to your other budget and to Parks and Rec, actually, is some of the numbers, so under part-time employees that you said was summer help, the twenty, the fiscal year twenty-one ending was thirty-five hundred and forty dollars. And this year, fiscal year ending is estimated to be twenty-eight-five, which is very much under budget. Are you finding that those types of things have been affected by how much we use some of these line items because of COVID? Because that's quite a difference if we're still keeping the budget at thirty-eight-four in the last two years. But I'm, I'm guessing the last two years aren't, on many lines, are not going to be a reliable pattern because of the changes from COVID. Is that the explanation for that, or is there some other reason why there's such a dip?
That's a portion of the reason for it, too. So there is a little bit extra in there. And so I typically have been, in the past, we pulled as many as four employees in for summer help. Depending on staffing, if I have somebody out, it really can impact me. So there's a little bit of protection in there built into that. And so right now, I can fund two and a half people, maybe three people off of that. But it allows me a little bit of safety. You know, we just, you know, I have two persons right now that are out of work with an injury. So I, I need to make sure that I can provide the same services so I kept that little bit of labor protection in there for that.
Okay. On, what are your, what falls under contractual services for you?
So, so that would be for fleet services. So you'll see a number in there for the municipal solid waste, and then also for the recycling. So that's for things that that cannot repair in-house on the vehicles. So that's part of that.
That doesn't fall under vehicle operations?
So there's-
Or ma, or equipment maintenance?
Yeah, so there's materials in there also. So let's see, if I go over to contractual services, and then if you get down to general materials and supplies, that's also, so general materials and supplies are the consumables, right? And then vehicle operation supplies, you can, the toders, the toders actually fall into the general supplies. But the vehicle operation supplies are tires, brakes, all of those consumables that we, that we maintain the vehicles with throughout the year. But the contract, contracted services are things that we pay others to do for us.
And then, so the toders, we, we buy, and then residents pay for them. So does this number include the residents' payment, and this is the amount we pay? Where does the income from the residents paying for them go?
So it goes into the revenue side of it. So if you look on page seventy-five, there's the financing plan. And under recycling, we've actually increased that from the fifteen-hundred to sixty-five. We just put a five thousand dollar buffer in there, not knowing how many toders will be sold. And then we also decreased bulky waste because we, we haven't seen those revenues coming in on budget. So just, we just kind of flipped the five thousand between the two.
Okay, so the, the amount that people pay for the toders is going into that recycling line?
Correct. It comes through as a revenue because you can't net the revenue and the expenses.
Right, okay. Another question. So last year, we put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into your vehicle fund. Is a hundred thousand dollars enough to keep you on track with your vehicle replacements?
Yeah, so we have remaining a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the fund right now. The extra hundred will put me at two fifty. The new vehicle is roughly three. So I'm looking to the following year coming up, I'll add another hundred. That'll be, put us in a good spot, ready to purchase another second new vehicle. So I think that, that'll work out just right.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
I have a few more, is that all right?
Nope, one, you have the floor.
So I know that you said that your increases are three percent. When I add up the line for laborers, it's four point three percent. Does that include some step increases?
Let's see, so, so that's on benefits?
Under, on page seventy-seven, under the full-time employees' salaries and wages, light equipment operators is up three and a half percent, and laborers is up four point three percent.
Oh, so-
Which isn't much above your three percent standard, but-
If you're on page seventy-seven? Yeah, so that you're really looking at right there is the, the full-time employee analysis. So if, like the example, Public Works Director, twenty percent, that's a point two, so twenty percent of my pay- The next section down. Oh, I'm sorry. Salaries and wages?
The amounts.
Ron?
Does this include the benefits?
So with, with their, this contract here, they step every six months.
Yeah. And that's, and they step every six months. So typically, your laborers or your lower guys, those are your newer entry guys, and they're stepping every six months.
Yeah.
And that's where that comes in.
Yeah.
People that are senior, they've typically stepped out, and they're at their max level, and that typically goes with what the, the annual increases are.
That's great, thank you.
But that's the way the contracts are written, and Director Robards deals with it, and Director Hill deals with it. Yeah, Ron did mention of it earlier. You know, a new employee comes in, the step one, and they need to go through all the steps, and it's every six months.
Okay.
And it's automatic, it's in the contract.
Yeah.
And then my last question.
Okay.
So one thing that I've always found very frustrating about some of our budgets, but it's obviously very necessary, is that many of our department heads have multiple budgets. So your salary is split over multiple budgets? Yeah. So I, I think, and I don't think I brought this up last year, but I think it would be helpful for residents to somehow do a summary page for, for example, I've had people ask me how much department heads make. It takes me a long time to add that up because it's in three different budgets. But I think that residents have a right to know how much the department head's actually making, not just as running highway or as running the sanitation department. So I think I added it up correctly, that your salary is one fifteen, one oh six for the, that's what is budgeted for the next year. Does it sound right? Over across the three budgets?
Yeah, Ron would have the exacts.
I'll get back to that. I don't have that folder with me.
And the only reason I'm mentioning that is because I, I think that residents should know, one, you're running three departments. They should know, you know, all of the stuff that you handle. And I think that we are very reasonable here fiscally, and we are very responsible, and I think that's a reasonable amount to pay a Public Works Director. But I, I think I, I would like to see those departments that we spread the salary out, which, again, budget-wise, it makes complete sense. I understand why we do that. But I think it makes it very unclear to people who aren't used to looking at budgets, when we do that, when we split salaries across departments. I know for, like, lower employees, it's a little difficult and more tedious because we have more of them. But for department heads that have split budgets, it would be nice if we had it somewhere, a summary of, of people who cross the departments. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah, I can put something together for you.
And that salary range should, just about right. So I started one-ten. I had a full year of probation without an increase. I just completed that, and I received two and a half. And then by the end of this contract, I'll have another increase, which is proposed to be three percent, and that puts me right about your number. So that makes sense.
And I just wanted to, it's very, it's very reasonable. I'm not questioning your salary because I, I do think that's a very reasonable number for the amount of work that you do. I just-
Ease, ease of, ease of understanding.
A little clearer.
I get it. Yeah, we can do that. Any other questions? Any other questions? Counselor Norris, you have questions on the sanitation budget?
Yes, you are, I do.
Okay, you have the floor.
And it goes back to the part-time employee line. So if I understood, I ran through the saying, some of that may include funds in case a full-time employee is out of legal medical, that then a part-time person could be hired to- that then a part-time person could be hired to do some tasks within the sanitation division. Is that what I heard?
So, typically, yes, thank you. So, typically, I'll try to get by with two persons for the X amount of weeks for the summer, and they would be on the sanitation trucks as laborers. And depending on the workload and what we have going in addition, you know, for public works, some sidewalks, we have a lot of work going on this year. I may pull a third person in, and that gives me that layer of allowing me to provide the same level of services across. So, it's correct.
Well, let me answer your, let me-
Another question.
Oh, you go ahead.
I don't know who can answer this one. So, if a full-time person goes out, let's say for medical, and they're on short-term disability, is this in this budget or somewhere else?
We do not have a short-term disability. It would be based on their time off accruals.
Thank you. No other questions?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on sanitation? All right, we'll move on to building maintenance, that's on page 78. Starts-
So, next is facilities. And instructions are responsible for maintenance and upkeep for public buildings. Costs associated with the maintenance of city buildings included the, including the- Included in this function is the cost for maintenance, supplies, personnel, costs, contracted services necessary for cleaning, maintaining city-owned properties. And I'll jump over to page 81. And I'll put that out just like I did on the last time, it'll only take a moment. So, full-time employees, and again, Deputy Mayor, there's a portion of my salary there, it's 20% of my salary. And in addition, is 50% of one full-time employee laborer. So, if you look at the rates, so last year, we had 35,600, and this year is 52,449. So, that's really the lion's share of the increase on this budget right here, and that's for that one piece. So, last year, we overspent, and I can better explain that. So, at the end of the year, I tally up all of the hours performed by our staff, and I break it down by the amount of hours that they do asphalt repairs, sidewalk repairs, stormwater. And then, in addition, there's a code or a bucket for facilities. So, in those facilities are pavement repairs out for the parking lot here, sidewalk repairs, you noticed we did a bunch of that last year, snow plowing, those types of services. So, I run the metric on it, and it comes up to nearly a half a person out of my public works group. So, I have a half a body of one of my laborers, that same rate, to pay for all of the services that we perform to take care of the facility. So, that's kind of where that's at. And that's what, and it's consistent with what we did last year, we just overspent a little bit last year, and that's why I put that out. Okay? Medical insurance, just typically, as benefits went up from 17,360 to 18,228. Pensions from 5,000 to 52,50. FICA, 27,23 up to 39. Past employees' benefits, 18,30, they remain consistent. Work as compensation went up from 11,500 to 12,075. And then down up to operating expenses. Utilities and fuel, it's remained the same at $1,000 across, and that's truly utilities more, so it's cable TV for storm watching and things like that, and that's what I've used for. Contractual services remain the same at $65,000. Those include HVAC services, backflow preventers, et cetera, tests like that where bringing others to do the work. Nothing on facilities, material supply. General materials and supply is remained unchanged at $40,000 across. That's the consumables, door repairs, hardwares, carpet, et cetera, air handling filters, all of the materials. And that should take care of that. The full-time employees' analysis, I think you can see there 20% of my salary. And there's your half a laborer, we went from .25, a quarter of a laborer, to a half a person this year, just to pay for all of the services that we perform on the facility. Okay? And that, right below that are your values. So, all of that added up, it comes to a increase this year. It is up, it's 10.95%, but again, that's all because of bringing up that cost, that labor, form of work, or the gift, that person. That's it, questions?
Deputy Mayor Depot.
So, your full-time employees, so you're saying that the laborer was misallocated to other?
No, that's why probably, maybe it was confusing. But again, we look at all of the hours, everybody works 2,080 hours a week, right? And I've got the staff of 15 people. At the end of the year, I break it all down on how many hours that I needed to perform sidewalk repair, asphalt repairs, whatever. And then, one of those line items is facilities work, and that's where that comes out to. So, it was roughly, so 2,080 cut in half is 1,040 hours. So, I needed to borrow or to use one of my public works persons, you know, that many hours, 1,040, it equates to a half a person.
But in 2021, the year ended, was a quarter person and $13,537 for that laborer, why did it cost so much more to maintain the buildings?
So, the rate that I added in for that employee is the current rate, and I use the rates for one of my newer employees who's also going through a step. But it did come in, you know, affordably, but it's a half of his rate, so. You might actually have the rates if you want, or look at it, if you need it. I can pull it up, but that's really the question. It's 20% of my pay plus 50% of the fee that we pay one of the laborers of public works.
So, I guess my question is though, it still doesn't make sense to me why the actual spend in 2021 was 13.5?
Because we only used, you know, 15% or 25% of one of those employees over there.
So, we used-
It's only probably 500 hours worth of rate, or whatever the equation was, does that make sense, Ron?
So, just kind of going back, so what we did was, in years past, we would charge the different departments for the highway services that were performed, like Bill was talking about, and it goes to this outside services code. So, what we decided probably four or five years ago was, there's times where we, this isn't any one specific laborer, per se. It could be the entire crew one day out front doing the sidewalks. So, it's all of their time doing those projects that are specific here. So, you, and so in 2021, they didn't do as much work around the building, whereas in 2022, I believe that is when you did a bunch of the sidewalk work out front. So, they just had more time here. So, the thought process of moving it up was that they plan on doing additional work at the facility, and that's why it got bumped up to, from a quarter to a half, was just to kind of cover that, to make sure we had money budgeted to do those projects for this building specifically, using the highway sanitation laborers, or crew, I should say, not even laborers, crew as a whole.
Okay, that was going to be my next question. So, we plan to do as much work on this building as we did in the past year? In the coming year? So, that makes sense because I think we have the Sears project coming up, although I don't know, is that contracted out, or are our guys doing that?
That will be contracted out.
But in addition, there's other works that I need to get done. We've kind of fallen behind on, but I'd like to get done some parking lot work, some fencing, other things that we need to do as well. Handicap crossing, there's many, many things. And again, you also have the snow plowing, you know, that's also supportive, that falls into that labor value. You know, so when the guys are plowing the parking lot here, they're building.
Right, but presumably, they were still doing that in 2021?
Yeah.
The plowing, it's the projects that pushed us over, and we have more projects coming up, is what you're saying?
More hours added up amongst the whole team.
Okay. Under contractual services, I understand putting money to make sure that we have enough for contractual services because those things like HVAC, can, like an HVAC project can all of a sudden cost you a lot of money. Is there an anticipation that we will actually spend that money? Because last year and the year before are more than $20,000 under budget, and it just seems like, why are we allocating that much money to that line if year after year, we don't use it?
So, very good question. So, I've been here a year, and we've got, for the air handlers, a great example. We have new air handlers on, and we've basically been running them to fail, right? So, I want to get going with the preventative maintenance schedules. We're looking at receiving prices right now to bring others in to do coil cleaning, you know, tuning of loops, so all the D and C, the controls, everything that goes right along with that. So, after I get through this year, everything should be in place to have all of those contractual services aligned and having us in a reliable state for the facility. So, we prevent having catastrophic failures, which truly costs you four or five times as much as staying with the preventative maintenance.
So, you expect fiscal year '24 for that contractual services number to drop?
No, that number will be good. No, no, I expect it, it may, it may get out a little bit. So, I'm bargaining, you know, to get locked-in prices, right? You know, competitive pricing for it, it might get out a little bit, wouldn't be surprised. I considered it this year to lower it a little bit because I needed to go up on that labor piece, but I thought it best I retain that just until I establish all of the preventative maintenance and the agreements that we need to have put in place.
Do we not also have some issues with the fire alarm panel and the diesel generator?
We do, because we have several things that we really want to get. I think in a year from now, we'll be in a really good spot with the facility. All of the contracted services and all of preventative maintenance.
Well, the generator, we had to report, no? That was covered by insurance?
Yeah.
The generator's under utilities.
Okay, all right. I know we had an issue with generator, I wasn't sure what, what a center, cost center came out of.
So, there's several services, so for example, fire alarms, sprinklers, backflow prevent tests, test asbestos abatement, pest control, boiler certs and repairs, HVAC, they mentioned two, external cleanings. We have custodial staff in here, but post-COVID, I think we learned a lot, where we really need to bring in others to really maintain the sterile environment. So, there are things that we can't self-perform, and I bring in others to do a real deep cleaning of the facility, so trying to get everything like that aligned, and so that's truly why I left that down.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor McCabe.
I kind of want to go back to the quarter person laborer going up to hop for facilities. Does that mean the budget for where you're pulling?
Public works.
Public works went down by a quarter person?
We did not change the FTEs to those other, to the highway or the sanitation budget. So, this is just a quarter that got added to this budget here, but nothing did drop by a quarter, just because of the unknown. And then, next year, once we have a better idea, we can true that up.
It's also a hybrid person, right? It's not-
It's not one laborer.
Right.
So, a good example, so when we plow the parking lot, you know, I've got a master mechanic, I've got, you know, heavy equipment operator out there, and they make a higher rate, and so it's kind of, it's all that stuff.
Right. Councilor Piazza.
Thank you, thank you for everyone putting these awesome budgets together. So, I just wanted to clarify and summarize if I'm hearing properly, which I think I am and I understand, is basically, it sounds like you kind of ran these numbers, looked at all the projects, projects are coming forward, so forth and so on, no matter if it was a master mechanic or not, and then the numbers all jumble, and that you realize you need a quarter more of a person that makes a half in order to get all these things completed. That's basically the summary, all right, correct? Okay. That's it, thanks.
Councilor Norris, your hand is up, are you still there?
Yes, I am, and I don't know why my hand is up, so I apologize.
Okay, do you have any questions on the maintenance budget, building maintenance budget?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm going to try, I'll take my hand down.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on the building maintenance? Hearing none, thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
The last budget is Parks and Rec, Mary? And that starts on page 82.
Good evening, everyone, and then, thank you. So, we'll start with the recreation side of the Parks and Recreation budget, as some of you are aware, my budget's broken down into two parts, recreation and then maintenance. The recreation budget is up, it's, oops, sorry, lost my key. Is up almost 7%. A lot of this is driven by our programs. Summer playground comes out of the recreation and the beach, which is salary-based, you know, the dollars. Minimum wage last year, when we started the season, was $12 an hour. It will be 14 dollars an hour when we start our playground program, and a majority of the kids or staff that work in that program make the minimum wage. So, that's a $2 increase in that program. The beach staff, we have minimum wage positions, but we also have staff that are a little more, lifeguards are certified. Lifeguards have a certification in order to maintain and keep our beach safe and be proactive in keeping it that way. So, they make a little bit more than minimum wage, so we have to make that adjustment. Some of the other areas in that whole hiring process is our contractual services under the playground and under the beach staff, and that's because we, all our staff is, all our new staff go get physical drug tests and then background checks, and all of our, everybody returning gets a background check. And every other year, returning staff gets drug tested. So, all that is encompassed into that budget in regards to, on the recreation side. It also encompasses all the concerts in the park, our bus trips. We are off a little bit in the last two years with bus trips because, in contractual services, because buses, first, in 2020, they weren't doing any bus trips, and then when we did start bringing them back, there was mandates for, it limits the number, you can only take half the capacity, they had to wear masks, so we didn't do as many. Our goal is, optimistically, hopefully, we can reinstitute that this year. So, that's where the larger increase of the recreation side of the budget is this year.
Okay, any questions on the recreation side of the budget?
Angela, Your Honor.
Okay, Councilor Norris, you have the floor.
All right. Mary. Seasonal. Budget, 271.8, estimating 245. Could you please explain why, if you did already, you did a dip there?
On page 87.
You did a very good job explaining the increase to 23, but I didn't hear why the dip in the estimate for your seasonal importance.
For the estimate is due to the fact that I didn't have, last year, I didn't hire full-staff lifeguards. I wanted 12, I budgeted for 12, I got seven. So, we didn't have as many lifeguards last season.
Any other questions on Parks and Rec? Councilor Sheffield?
I see you budgeted higher in the general fund. Is that due to, that's on 86, on the financing plan?
That is just where the increase falls, that we projected the revenues from the trip collections to be the same, same with the beach receipts, recreation receipts, and the Zabarski House. So, those all stay the same as far as the estimated revenue sources, so then the remaining piece of it comes out of the general fund.
Any other questions or comments on the Parks and Rec side?
I apologize, Your Honor, I do have one more question.
Counselor Norris?
Mary, where, where would I find in your budget, program development funding? Like new programs that you stumble across or get recommendations for?
So on page, sorry, seventy-six, under cost centers, under programs and events? That's where we, um, we have money for new programming, uh, any new events, like we had a soccer program this year, so that, we had a, we had a line item for new, new programs, we were able to pull that out of there to have the kids have a soccer program at the elementary school. That's one of the other things I forgot too, with our summer playground program, we're going back to the two sites, because now we have a school back, so, uh, we had had no, we'd only had the one location for two years, so now we'd have to kind of balance that out too, to have the two sites. My salary.
Okay, any other questions on Parks and Rec? All right, thank you, moving on to maintenance.
So our maintenance budget is, is down, I say that hesitant, is down, is because, well, it's because my, my capital improvement, my reserve funds for capital improvements is in this budget also, it comes out of maintenance, and that's gone down, it was a hundred and fifteen thousand last year, and it's, I believe, hold on, it's gone to sixty-four thousand, and it was one fifteen, I believe, last year. Um, yeah, so that's where the, a, a large dip of that comes from. This is the area of the budget where all the maintenance of all our facilities comes out of. And I do run into the same thing as the highway department, I have two gentlemen on my crew right now, they're on their steps, I have one that's in step two of six, and I have another one that's in step four of six, so there's, there's been a, and I, but I also changed some of my staffing, I had a maintenance mechanic, now I have two light equipment operators and a laborer, so I, I, you know, so there's been some adjustments with that to bring it down. So, those are the two, I guess, balancing differences with the maintenance side of things.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Mayor, um, I know, obviously, we all want to lower budgets all the time, is the sixty-four thousand dollars for your vehicle fund enough to keep you on track, to keep your vehicles replaced and in good condition?
Yes, so our, this is to help us, one, it's, I've already put away twenty thousand dollars for the, my SUV, so this would give me thirty thousand dollars towards getting the hybrid Ford Escape that I have, that's a twenty-ten replaced. The other equipment is, enables us to do stuff in the park, one of the, the mower that we're looking at is the actual mower that we would be able to get into the pond area of Washington Park and kind of keep that maintained properly. It will also give us the ability to maintain the areas of Birch Plain Creek that we have. The utility vehicle's going to help us with some small, instead of taking the F-two-fifty truck up into the park, this will enable, to pick up like branches and debris, this will give us the ability to do that, plus it will be a smaller plower to help us with the sidewalks. Right now we use a Kubota, some of the sidewalk areas you can see, especially out here in the front, we take the grass when we take the snow, so we have to do that maintenance, so this will help us eliminate that additional maintenance when we're done plowing in the winter. Yeah.
Please, you're still on the floor?
Thank you. Um, and I think my only other question is, and you mentioned this, so we no longer have a maintenance mechanic, but have two light equipment operators.
Correct.
So were we repairing our vehicles from, or maintaining them in your department alone before with a maintenance mechanic?
Um, no, our maintenance mechanic position has that title, because that's what it's given in the contract, the union contract, but it doesn't actually require them to be a mechanic.
Okay.
But we are working on those job descriptions to try to get that rectified, so that our positions actually do the jobs that they're saying they're doing. Our maintenance mechanic was the gentleman that had retired after thirty-four years of service to the city last November, and that's where he had gotten to in the process of being here. And when we went to replace them, it was more about getting...
People in the right position.
Right, exactly, and then, like I said, we're going to definitely work with the union and work on getting these positions, so that we can maybe have a maintenance, a real mechanic, doing some of the smaller maintenance work on our machine, on our equipment.
So right now, if your vehicles need maintenance, you, do you take them to an outside service?
Correct.
And that's under contractual services?
Correct. Uh, no, that's actually under, we put, we could take that out of, uh, cooperation.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I mean, we, so like, we have a, a scag mower, where we, we take it back to where we purchased it. We have this sand machine that we got from H. Barber and Son down at the beach, they, they actually come in every winter and do a free ma, a free checkup on that, and if they need to haul it out of here to get maintenance on it, they do it for us.
Okay, and then last thing, I'm going to say the same thing about the, so your salary is spread over two departments?
Correct.
Last year's salary was a combined, if I did this correct, ninety-four-five-one-eight? Does that sound right?
Sure.
Um, the projected, the proposed budget salary for this year, I believe, is ninety-nine-six-eight-zero, which is a five-point-four-six percent increase.
So that, I will, I will share, I, mathematical mistake by me. It went, uh, my salary currently, well, with the increase will be ninety-five-zero-fifteen. Oh, sorry, that's, I gotta, yeah. Yep. So in that, in that line item, it has myself in, it has the secretary. But I was, I presented it differently to the mayor and Ron when I did my presentation a couple weeks ago, and I corrected it in the recreation side, but I didn't correct it in the maintenance side.
So you're requesting a less than one percent raise?
No, I only make ninety-two-two-fifty right now per, by paycheck, so I don't know...
It's a three percent increase.
So if you go from the ninety-two, two-forty-eight, it's...
Oh, okay, so I'm just adding up the budget line items, that's not accurate? Because we have to build in buffer for something? I, I know there's an explanation for it, I don't know how to word it.
Yeah, I'll have to go back, I'll take a look at it, I'm not, I'm not sure offhand without going back and looking at actuals, it may have been just the way that the budget was done previously, and then we put the three percent on top of it, just off the budget, but we can, I'll take a look at it.
So it is three percent, not less than one percent?
No, it's three percent.
Okay.
Non-union employees are getting three percent across the board.
Just making sure. Okay, that's all.
Uh, any other questions on maintenance?
Yes, please, Your Honor.
Counselor Norris, you have the floor?
Um, just to remind you, did we raise fees for the beach this coming summer?
Uh, we did not.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. And then the next question is, I guess it's a procedural question, is changes to the budget like we just discussed, A, do we need to make motion on that? If not, does the corrected paperwork come to us at some point, or is it just a foregone conclusion that is done?
If there's any changes, they will come to you, and then that'll be part of the proposed budget that will be voted on by yourself, and it will outline all changes. Normally, something small, we wouldn't do a change for unless it is directed by the council.
Okay, I only ask, because I think there was a couple of budgets where things needed to be changed or corrected, so I'm just wondering if that is being packaged and being done in the entire budget book, would the changes will be given back to us before we...
If you could send, if you could send me an email with, with the areas that you think should be changed, let me know.
I think there was something in HR that needs to be changed, and there was something in, drawn a blank.
That's all right, send, send me an email.
Okay.
I will, and we'll end up sharing that information to the council. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I was just going to say to piggyback on what Counselor Norris said, I, I think there were a few departments, there was, I think it might have been HR, where the number was carried over from the year before, or something like that, where the estimate was incorrect, I think, or some, there was a number that was incorrect. So I think, I mean, if we were to get an updated page just to replace in our books for things like that, that would be helpful.
Right, I believe that what you're talking about was the actual in the wage line, it was project, the estimate was projected way over the budget amount.
Yes.
And, um, that was something that Linda was going to look back at, and then I believe we had a similar issue with FTEs as far as in the fire with, with budgeted amounts in the previous year, potentially being under budgeted, which created a, a larger increase than what was told, so. It's, I don't think we've had anything that's directly affected the twenty-twenty-three budget, it's more of the estimate versus potentially something in the twenty-twenty-two budget. But if I'm, if I am misspeaking on that, and there is something, like the mayor said, please let him know.
I think, I think you're right, that all sounds correct, and from what I remember. I would like, if we can get, because presumably those need to be updated in the system, so if we could get corrected pages, I would appreciate that, because I, you know, do another look over before we vote, so.
Okay, not a problem, we can do that. I don't think any of the discussions that we've had regarding numbers have changed any of the bottom line on the twenty-twenty-three proposed budget, so. Uh, any other questions on maintenance? Okay, thanks, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?